Just got to touch quiet her, but I can still hear it.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of January 20th. Due to the inability of the Shrewsbury Media Connection staff to support a broadcast from Town Hall this evening, we are meeting remotely. Our meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it is streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I would like to thank SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah, as well as Shrewsbury Public Schools IT Director Brian LaRue, who do help with our, every one of our meetings. First is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so, you can contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us, and we'd be happy to have you join us. Next is Chairperson in Members' Report. Does anybody have anything this evening? Not seeing anything from the members. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fritz. I did want to share with the community this past Friday was the second of our two full professional development days in the typical schedule for the school year. Our staff worked very hard throughout the day. They began with two hours of opportunity to continue to do collaborative planning work connected to the work we are doing in our hybrid and remote models. That was followed by a keynote from educator Chase and author Chase Milky, who is a nationally known author whose area of focus is on utilizing the lessons of positive psychology to combat teacher burnout. And then in the afternoon, we had a presentation from Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson, who has joined the school district in the past to help continue to focus on our work with regard to equity and anti-racism. I want to thank everyone for participating. I want to especially thank Amy Clouter for spearheading the organization of this meeting. It's not easy to get nationally known presenters and to help them adapt their presentations to the needs of our district. And I think it's important to note that the, the structure of the day and the content were directly related to the feedback we'd received from our staff in, around what they felt their needs were. So again, kudos to Ms. Clouter for orchestrating that day. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And as we continue, begin each of our meetings this year, we're going to stay with Dr. Sawyer and staff and continue with the opening of school for 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So again, this is another update in terms of how we're responding to the pandemic. As always, I know it's the broken record approach, but we'll begin with the three key messages we've been sharing, that the health and wellbeing of our students, our families and our staff is our first priority. That our focus this year has been to develop a safe school environment for our students and our staff that prioritizes everyone's wellbeing and enables high levels of learning for all. And that we continue to operate on guidance from public health authorities, the elementary and secondary education department from the state. And while we closely monitor the latest data and information and speak to medical experts regarding what the impact is here in Shrewsbury. The news is better this week relative to the number of cases we're experiencing. We have eight so far to date. That's only one today. We had one day with none. We've now have a total of 267 cases that have been since the start of the school year in our hybrid model among students and staff combined. And only three of those have been traced to a possible exposure from school, so a little over 1%. In our remote program, we haven't had any cases this calendar week, but we've had 17 total of students who don't set foot in our schools, who are entirely remote, who have reported being positive for COVID. Students and staff who are totally remote. One shift and change I wanted to make the community aware of is that we made a change in our communication practice. We actually update our data dashboard on our website, which can be fun. You can find the link right on our homepage and the link is right there on the slide as well. That is updated every day at approximately 4:00 PM with whatever cases came in that particular day. And then each Monday, we'll continue to update the weekly count. You can see that's the graph here on this slide. You can see the cases, you know, from 25 cases, the week of December 20th climbed to 30 cases and then 33 cases over the two weeks of the break and right after the break, and then came back down to 25 the week of January 10th. And if the trend continues with this week, that number will be even lower when we report out next Monday. So the increase over the connected to the holiday vacation was, was impactful, but not as much as it was for the overall town numbers. And it has been coming back down since then, which is a good sign. In terms of the positivity rate for the state as a whole, that's also a good news story right now. Where last time we reported on January 6th, that rate was 8.15% for the state as a whole. And overall, it's come down to 5.58% as a Johns Hopkins, which updates this slide regularly. As far as our own positivity rate in Shrewsbury, this is the latest data that was published, which was relative to, and I apologize, the link at the bottom of that slide needs to be updated, but in terms of January 14th report, the two previous reports, the January 7th and the 14th, the positivity rates were just above 9%, which is the highest they've been over the course of the reporting period, going back to August when we started doing this. I do anticipate, based on the way the numbers have been moving, that that positivity rate when tomorrow's weekly report is publicized will come down. And this is a trailing report, the two weeks it's reporting on, tomorrow will just be through the end of this last week. So again, we believe that will be continued to trend in the right direction based on the numbers that we're seeing. In terms of the actual case count, the last time it was reported by the state on their January 14th report, again, that was for the two week period, starting December 20th and ending January 2nd. So again, that's a little bit of a trailing statistic. It was 32.8 cases per day, 260 cases over that two week period, and 83.2 per 100,000, which was obviously a higher number. And again, the way that the community numbers trended were not as, as dramatic within the school district, which is obviously good from our perspective. This is a slide I've shared before that just recognizes again that there is research that talks about what kinds of mitigation factors are effective within schools. And we are following all these mitigation factors and looking at these strategies as being effective and making sure that we are limiting and minimizing the chance of school, in-school spread occurring. And so far, that has been the case, just a few exceptions to that over the course of the time we've been in school since September. Also, we remind people that the updated state guidance on determining whether or not, what kind of learning program to be in, they indicate that if you're in the red zone, you should be in hybrid and you really should be basing your decision on whether to be in hybrid or not, on whether or not you're seeing spread within your schools, which is not something we're seeing at this time. For those who may be watching weren't familiar, we had made the decision, didn't make the decision to have our schools be all remote for the week following the December school vacation, just to be able to hit pause and see how the cases in our school, among our students and staff were trending, given the amount of contact we were expecting potentially students to have and staff to have over the course of that vacation period. And at the end of that week, we did determine to come back to hybrid because of the numbers of cases we were seeing internally. And that was based on specific guidance that we received from the medical experts with whom we consult. And again, just indicating that hybrid is the model the state is expecting. If you're in a red zone, assuming you're not experiencing in-school spread. I want to again reiterate that part of our goal here is to maintain the stability of our program. We are minimizing close contacts because of the six-foot spacing, because of our alternating schedule. There have been districts in Massachusetts, as well as other places that have had to move to full remote because they can't staff their schools because of the number of people who are in quarantine, which is one of the benefits of having the six-foot distancing. And that, you know, the case count and the positivity rate, the increases that were happening were concerning, of course. But we continue to consult with public health and medical experts to ensure that we are trying to follow the, the guidance around what is a reasonable level of risk relative to COVID, balanced against the risks that we know occur when students aren't able to be in school, at least part of the time in person. Again, suspected in-school transmission, just as a reminder, we reported this out last meeting as well. We had three suspected cases. They were all in December. They happened between two individuals in each case. For two of these, we did additional testing and no clusters were identified because there were zero additional, additional positive cases. And the other one was between a small subset of staff who were in a self-contained work group, where there were also no other positives. And at this point, wanted to update the committee and the community regarding a, an approach to surveillance testing that we are looking to implement. And with this, I will turn it over to our Director of Nursing, Noel Freeman.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. So we talked a little bit about this two weeks ago to let the committee and the community know that our surveillance testing program is something that we were starting to think about. As we continue in the process, we just wanted to keep you up to date as to where that program planning is at. So we are looking at pooled testing, which we talked a little bit about last time. Pool testing is considered to be cost-effective and is also considered by the FDA to be an important public health tool because it allows more people to be tested using fewer resources. So pool testing involves a group of people's individual specimens being combined by the lab to run one test instead of running several individual tests. If the pool result is negative, it's considered safe to assume that everyone in that pool is negative. And if the pool result is positive, then the individuals within the pool need to be tested to determine who, which of them within that pool is indeed positive. So the goal of pool testing is to identify asymptomatic individuals in a community so they can isolate per public health guidelines and help in the effort to prevent spread of the virus. Our plan at this point is to phase in testing. Our hope is to begin by making testing available to all staff across the district, beginning in early to mid-February, and then to expand testing to students at the high school by mid to late February. If you can move to the next slide, I do want to emphasize that the test we're looking at is the shallow nasal swab. It is not the deep swab that we probably all heard about back in the spring and people were understandably hesitant to go and be tested because of what was involved in the test. I've actually done the shallow nasal swab test myself and can attest that it's quite quick and painless. The test will actually be self-administered. They'll be sent home with staff or students and then returned the following day to a designated collection area in each building. And then we will ship them off to the lab and we expect to have results back within 36 hours of shipping the samples. So as we go along with the program, we'll determine whether we feel there's a need to add younger grades, be under high school grades based on case numbers at the time in those locations. To date, the high school has seen the most cases and that's our rationale for starting with the students there. Participation in testing will not be mandatory for staff or students, but we will highly encourage participation because the more people who are screened, the better picture we'll have of what the COVID prevalence is in our school community. And now I am going to pass the next slide on to Mr. Collins, who's going to talk a little bit more about the business side of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Freeman. So we are in the final stages of concluding a contract with a vendor to provide what will be a weekly pooled testing regimen. That's the surveillance part, meaning ongoing, regular testing on a weekly basis. I would just add that although this is not mandatory, what we've learned from a few other districts who have started this is that the typical rates of participation for both staff and students hovers around 80%. So in those other districts in Massachusetts where they have begun this, both staff and students are very eager to participate so as to make sure that the environment that they're learning in continues to be a safe one. And so we would expect those, those same types of results. And again, highly encourage all staff and students to participate when we roll out. We're trying to move ahead as quickly as possible. There is, some folks might have heard a state program that is beginning as well. We believe that we can move more quickly than that. And so that's our intent. And while the vendor that we're working with right now is not part of that program, there's a potential that they do become part of that program somewhere down, down the road when that, when it finally rolls out. So how are we going to fund this? So initially, what we're going to do is use some of the federal stimulus funding actually that we received last May-June timeframe under the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or the so-called ESER funds. We've got about $152,000 left in that particular grant program. So we'll be utilizing those funds first to roll out this program and, and then hopefully transition to other grant funding after that particular pot is exhausted. So that's a little bit more around the business end of this and financing. And I'll turn it back to Dr. Sawyer at this point.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Collins, Ms. Freeman, also Karen Isaacson, our Director of Extended Learning, who's also been assisting and will be a key part of the logistical portion of this program. They vetted different vendors and chose one that the, the process is going to be resulting in the minimum amount of disruption to our educational program. Obviously, the time kids are in school is precious and we want to minimize the time that it would be disrupted for testing, hence the self-administered approach. It's also the vendor we're planning to go with also has a very sophisticated system of being able to match students with samples through QR codes that minimizes some of the, what would likely be a need to add some kind of staffing support if we were going to do it in some different vendors. So I think they've been very thoughtful about this. I support it. If someone has the question about why we haven't done this previous, essentially, we haven't had enough money to do it and, and keep it going for some period of time. We'll start with that pot of money Mr. Collins referred to, but we are expecting to get more money from the proposed stimulus program that will be coming out of Washington. Obviously, this is not done yet, but we, we are confident that that will pass through the United States Congress and be signed into law in the relatively near future. And based on the proposal that President Biden's administration put forward, we expect that that will help us continue to have this happen over time. We do think it will provide really excellent peace of mind initially for our staff as we begin with our staff rolling that out, and then as well with our older students and their families. And we'll see how much further depending on how it's going and depending on available financial resources, how much we can expand it beyond that. But we think it's a good idea. We think it's an important tool. And I really am pleased that we're going to be moving forward with this. At this point, the last part of our update has to do with another state mandate that was issued that comes into effect this month. I'll be turning it over to Amy Clouter, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. We'll provide some details as to how our schools are going to meet the demands of this new mandate.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. My focus tonight is updating the community on student learning time. But before I launch into the slides, I want to begin with a thank you. I'm grateful to the many stakeholder groups, including building administrators, curriculum teams, and especially SCA members for their input and suggestions on how Shrewsbury can best meet this latest mandate from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Although I'm presenting, the ideas I'm sharing are the brainchildren of many discussions and especially a working group that assembled to kind of tackle this challenge together. Any change is hard and certainly any change that impacts the schedule poses challenges for students and staff alike. But it's important to recognize that the premise behind this new mandate is to make things better. And the changes that I plan to outline tonight were designed specifically to make things better for students by fostering more live connections with teachers. As you know, at the heart of the issue is the amount of live time that all students receive over a two-week span. And to recap, live time is synchronous time that can either be in-person or via Zoom. DESI collected data from every district in early November to come up with new guidelines on the minimum amount of live learning time that all students must experience. And in a hybrid model, our district average has to be 35 hours over 10 days. We did not meet the standard at any grade span and we were most out of compliance at the elementary and the high school level. And so working together, we sought to craft a plan that could meet the expectations in the mandate and make meaningful impact on students academically and socially. Student learning time is averaged across grade spans to provide districts flexibility to implement changes that meet the needs of children at each grade level. And so for that reason, at some levels, student learning time might be higher than others or even exceed the minimum requirement. The biggest challenge for us was complying with the minimum of 35 hours of live instruction in a hybrid model. Because the student learning data we submitted to DESI already accounted for in-person learning days. For our district, the only way to increase live time was to engage students on their remote days. The next data collection point is January 25th. And so while we've already started making some changes, this means that we have some additional time to implement some of the more complex shifts that I'll explain soon. Again, in a hybrid model, the key advantage is that every student gets live instruction every week in person. But the model also poses some constraints because schedules were built around the notion that we would alternate in-person instruction. Survey results indicate that most staff and families like that design. Adding live time to students' schedules on remote days means that teachers will now have to engage both cohorts, at least some of the time. And the bottom line for our educators is that they'll either be required to manage student groups or to manage instructional plans differently. So the question became how to make that change both meaningful and manageable for staff and families. And as much as we could in the time that we had, we elicited ideas from the field. Our interest is twofold, consistency of instruction for students and flexibility. And sometimes these priorities are at odds. Even if everyone agreed on the plan, making an adjustment would take additional effort at a time when everybody's feeling strained. And we recognize that at every level, our teacher teams are spending hours developing shared plans, videos and lessons. So for that reason, as we propose solutions, we sought to adjust schedules and we prioritize solutions that will minimize the change. We also prioritize solutions that would give more time to something that we know is valuable for students, some things that would alleviate a known challenge for staff and/or solve existing problems. And finally, when we were presented with several good ideas, we aired on the side of solutions that could be implemented simply and reliably for students and for staff. To comply with the new DESI requirements, we have to extend live time over a 10-day period and provide a check-in for all students. Overall, we aspired for consistency so that student outcomes would remain the same. But it's also true that what we think will work may not work in practice. And if we don't see the desired results, we hope with implementation, we might make adjustments in how we meet the live requirement. But we are compelled by the state to start. And so I'm going to detail how we propose different solutions by grade span. At the elementary level, we made four changes. Firstly, students will be logged in and live on Wednesday mornings from 9:15 to 12:15. This is during the what I need block. And so the change here is that students have this block in their schedules, they'll just be live for longer. In addition, students will participate in a 15-minute closing circle or read aloud during the week. And this is already something that is taking place in classrooms on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. So this really just cements a practice that we already feel is a good move. The next step is to engage our paraprofessionals in supporting students on their remote days. So we'll be adding up to three hours a week of additional support. And this is made possible with the purchase of the new technology that will support paras in making that connection. And understandably, paraprofessionals will need the support of classroom teachers in guiding what those connections will be about and in getting better at zooming, just as our educators had time to get used to using this new technology. And finally, students will zoom into the classroom for 30 minutes on their remote days for reading or writing. So that means that a teacher could go live for a whole group lesson in reading or live for a whole group lesson in writing or go live during a rotation of different activities. And kids would be working independently while other kids were meeting with the teacher and rotating through that group, but the students would be connected throughout that period so that they could access teacher help if they needed. And again, because of them making this shift, depending on how teachers approach the English Language Arts Block, it might mean that some of the instructional plans, the timing changes, but the content will remain consistent so that student outcomes are the same. At Sherwood Middle, the change is relatively small. Remote students are going to zoom in from home and a teacher will address both groups of students simultaneously during the morning meeting block. Secondly, there was a block called academic focus time that was already built into the schedule. This is a more significant change. Although teams have this block in their schedule, we're expanding the time so that it's standard 45 minutes, four times a week for all teams. So this is a matter of taking a good idea that was in place and extending the time and then making it consistent. At Oak, we're going to add an opportunity for daily connection for students to the existing schedule for each period, which will enable students to zoom in from home for the first 15 minutes of each class period. A teacher will address both group of students. And after 15 minutes, students who are at home will be released to complete asynchronous work on their own. And this will apply to all classes except for physical education because of course, we, we don't want kids to be zooming as they're doing something active and we don't want to compromise that active time. This solution at Oak was a good example of trying to craft some ideas that could also address a known problem, namely tracking student attendance. The addition of this time to all periods was designed to engage and connect students to all their teachers on remote learning days and boost students' executive functioning skills, making it easier for staff to track attendance and also work completion. The solution at Oak is technically more than the minimum that's required, but we looked carefully at the time and felt that adding a mere five minutes or 10 minutes to the schedule was not going to be sufficient to do more than get everybody logged on. And so again, this is a matter of finding a meaningful change that will be impactful for students and trying to avoid changes that would mean alternating the whole schedule or introducing too much inconsistency for students and families. We wanted to preserve existing schedules where possible and definitely maintain the Wednesday collaboration time that staff value so much. At the high school, like Oak, the schedule poses similar challenges and opportunities. And so it doesn't surprise me that the solution we arrived at was the same, which is that we'd add an opportunity for daily connection to existing schedules in each period, which means that students would zoom in from home and that we could preserve the, the schedule that's in place. After 15 minutes, students who are at home would be released, similar to Oak. In addition, at the high school, we are trying to offset the loss of instructional time for in-person days by adding back a minute of passing time between each period. So although that's a minor change, what we're finding at the high school is that most students with the reduced numbers in the hallways are arriving to class within four minutes anyway. And so this is a way to kind of offset some of that time that otherwise would be lost on in-person days. And finally, I know this has been a brief overview, but it And finally, I know this has been a brief overview, but it introduces a really big change, and change is hard. And we've been managing a lot of change recently, and this one had to be put in place on a tight timeline. So, we recognize that what's been proposed might be better received by some families, students, or staff than others. Grace and flexibility has really helped us to navigate the initial challenges that we had to put in place with COVID conditions. And these same qualities will be needed again. Again, our goal was to balance teacher autonomy and flexibility with serving students well by adding meaningful activities that we know have value and to create consistency for families. As I've mentioned, we want students to engage in a full learning day, but this doesn't mean we want students to be online that whole day. We want students to have access to live teaching, but that doesn't mean we want teachers to feel like they're on camera all day. And our goal is to assure that all students remain connected engaged. And we've continuously strived to come up with solutions that alleviate known concerns for staff whenever possible. That said, staff and families in reviewing the plans may have some concerns, and we're open to feedback. This new requirement will take some practice to adjust to, but it's for a good cause, our students. And while the time requirements are set, there is some room to make schedule adjustments as needed. And I'm sure feedback from families and educators will help us further improve the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. So, in terms of this update, I again want to emphasize that we continue to maintain hope for better times that are ahead, but we need to continue to be candid about our current situation. We know that things are going to eventually get better and return to something more normal. Obviously, we can't predict the timeline of how that's going to happen. The upcoming pool testing will help move us in that direction. Obviously, as the vaccine is rolled out, that will be a huge help as well. And we're hoping that the recent trend in case counts getting lower will continue to move in that direction. We have to keep analyzing our current circumstances. We need to make decisions based on this balanced view of risk. And there is risk of, like anything else, there's risk with making change, there's risk of not making change. And we have to assess what we need to do and why we need to do it. As far as the student learning time piece, I think it's important that we're candid, and Ms. Clutter alluded to it, change is very difficult. Certainly, we were not in a position that we were expecting that we were going to be changing some of our instructional approaches midway through the year. What we don't have control over is the fact that the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education mandated that we did. None of the plans to make that shift are going to be perfect. We had a variety of ways in which we made those decisions across the elementary and middle and high school levels. And to be candid, there are some teachers who are feeling that they can make some improvements as a result of that. There are others who are very upset that they have to change their practice, and they're not in agreement with the decisions that have been made. That goes with virtually every decision we've had to make over the course of this year in the pandemic. And that's not a comfortable position for any of us to be in. Certainly, we will continue to listen to the concerns that our teachers bring to us. I think it's important to note for everyone that these decisions were not made unilaterally, they were not imposed by the administration. We actually met several times with the representatives of the teachers, the Shrewsbury Education Association, in order to vet different solutions that were being proposed and come to agreement as to what we would move forward. And we know that that's not an easy position for the Teachers Association to be in either, because we are not going to have unanimity about what the best approaches are. As Ms. Clutter indicated, we are certainly going to continue to listen to feedback. We will continue to see how things are going as we implement these changes. And we're trying to focus on what's working, how we might be improving the situation for both students and staff, and where we can make adjustments that make sense and keep us in compliance with the responsibilities we have to be aligned with the regulations that the state has put forward. We will look to do that. But again, none of this is easy, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to gain some improvements in different ways as a result of meeting our obligations. So, again, we'll continue to look carefully at all the elements that we're facing relative to COVID, relative to the instructional program. We will continue to do our best to make good decisions. We'll continue to try to work through this despite the fact that we already have a very difficult situation. And recognizing that change during the midst of that can make it even more difficult. So, I appreciate the effort that everyone is putting in, and I appreciate the flexibility, and I appreciate the patience with our families, our students, and our educators. So, thank you, and be happy to take any questions about the information and the update.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And if you could stop sharing your screen so I could see everyone. Are there any questions from the committee? Dr. Sawyer, could you share on your screen? All right. Jason, did I hear you?
Yes, sorry. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Clutter and Ms. Freeman and the entire team for the presentation. I do have a question for Ms. Clutter, which I'll proceed with a comment. You know, I did have a question with regard to some of the thought process around some of the specifics regarding the allocation of the time. I do want to express personally, first and foremost, I am frustrated with the Commonwealth. I do think that changing expectations midstream felt a bit political as far as I was concerned and was a bit disingenuous on the part of the Commonwealth, but that's just my personal opinion. I appreciate the work that you, Ms. Clutter, and your team have done to bring us up to this new standard. I do have a question in light of, we did receive an inquiry from a high school parent earlier today. So, I did want to ask if you could elaborate, especially at the high school level. Obviously, there's different ways you can allocate time when time is a threshold that you need to meet. You can put it in, do it in different ways. Can you elaborate on the value of the fifteen minutes at the top as opposed to, for example, having a couple of classes go live the entire time?
Sure. I think the answer, the simplest way to answer it is where we put value in terms of what the teacher perspectives were and directors engage staff to kind of think about the trade-offs of, do you engage students with every teacher at every period? As we know, some students connect better with some teachers than others. And so, having a solution that fosters a connection in every period would help all students to find that adult that they feel safest with. I think the other piece is, given the schedule, if we made some changes that would lengthen in-person connections with remote, or live connections with remote students on some days versus others, it throws into kind of unalignment, kind of the content delivery. So, if you have one, you know, period-one class, you might get that live time in a week. Then, period-seven class might not get that until two weeks later. And so, what seems to be working on the part of the scheduling piece is that educators have some consistency of delivering content that would be compromised otherwise. I think the final piece is that, you know, we wrestled with live streaming and the benefits of engaging kids live initially when we were putting together the educational plan. And we felt that we wanted to be mindful of screen time and, at the same time, the importance of fostering a connection between teachers and students, both on in-person days and then through tasks and activities that were meaningful when they were home. And we felt that what seems to be resonating is the needs to help students manage their time on the days that they're home and to kind of support their social-emotional development as a key priority. And so, adding the fifteen minutes to each period meets that need best in the view of the high school.
Thank you.
Brad, if you want to elaborate at any point, feel free to jump in. I don't want to speak for you while I'm looking at you.
No, well said. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? John?
Yeah. First off, thanks for the presentation. In terms of change, you know, change is difficult. I think we've been going through it for the last eleven months. As things evolve, we learn how to, you know, deal with things differently. As state guidance evolves, we have to adjust and adapt. Clearly, you know, this isn't the ideal situation, right? We'd all like to be back in the classroom. I think as a parent of a high school student in the hybrid model, my most challenging days are Monday and Tuesday when there isn't engagement, right? So, it's just the motivation behind, there's work to do, right? But on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, that doesn't exist because they have a set schedule. So, I like this engagement piece, at least from my perspective as a parent. It's going to vary by family, I'm sure. But I also think it's important, what Ms. Clutter said and what Dr. Sawyer said. It, you know, is definitely subject to feedback. But, you know, I think what Ms. Clutter just explained in her responses, it's a lot about scalability based on the schedule and what that allows. So, you know, I think we, you know, need to, you know, try it out, you know, see how it works, to see what the feedback is. But it is important as, you know, the state guidance has evolved over time. So, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lindsay?
Thank you. I, of course, want to thank everybody for all of their comments. I do just want to go on record and say I'm excited about the pool testing moving forward. I think there are many of us on this committee who have talked at length about how we need more data to make sound decisions to one day end the hybrid model and bring our kids back in the building, right? And so, if this gets us a little bit closer to that, I'm in full support, and I think it's a smart use of some of the allocated money that we have. I do, I want to agree with my colleagues that the change is hard. And I appreciate Dr. Sawyer's comments really focusing on what that means for our staff. And I want to acknowledge that change for parents is also really hard. And so, my house schedules haven't become unimportant during COVID, right? There's still a wake-up time, and there's still a dinner hour, and there's still some after-school things and time with your grandparents or whatnot. And everyone's juggling something different. And so, I want to say, put on record, while I'm a proud supporter of the district and the choices that you're making, I also say, wait, the schedule's changing? Wait, we just got into a pattern, right? And I understand the pattern, and what do you mean, what do you mean, longer? And, you know, and so, you know, and having a few people having all their schedules shift a little bit does throw a bit of a kink in the works for families. So, I do think at the end of the day, one of the things that we have struggled with as a community, as of all communities right now, but I think it's really important for us and what we're going through is attending to kids' social-emotional well-being. And I am particularly concerned about that at the middle school and high school level. And I hope that kids having more opportunity to see their teachers, they develop a little bit more of that connection than maybe just twice, two days a week. You know, rock star teachers that we have, that is difficult to make connection. So, I hope that's a positive output here. One, two relatively quick questions for you, Ms. Clutter. The one you sort of put out there, if families are interested in giving feedback, I would encourage families, as my own family is struggling through this, to give us a couple of weeks to get out, get out the kinks. But if they have that, sometimes these decisions that are made sort of at the district level or even worse by the state, people always feel like that feedback is warranted, the decision's sort of been made. But you're also suggesting you expect there might be some iteration. And at times, people do email the school committee. That's one way, or maybe not the most efficient way to get information. So, I don't know if there was another method by which you would think that would be reasonable for parents to share. Again, I'd hope they give us a little bit of, a little bit of time to kind of get situated and see how this looks. But, you know, if parents are having thoughts and they're wondering, what kind of feedback mechanism do you think would actually make sense and be a useful one, both to you and a good forum for parents?
So, I think first of all, I wouldn't preclude anybody sharing feedback in the way that feels safest to them. So, if it's emailing me directly, you know, people are welcome to do that. But I think that it's best to kind of share suggestions and feedback at the source. And so, teachers, for example, are planning collaboratively at every level. And so, if a parent shares a concern or a frustration, or even a kudos with a teacher directly, they inevitably bring that back to their team. I haven't thought about a more formal feedback mechanism, because the notion of whether we are change isn't really in question. It's kind of how we've decided to implement the change. But I think at the teacher level, if people are comfortable, and if not at the principal level, because I'm in constant communication with both of those groups as we kind of navigate what these schedule changes will mean for people.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if I could just ask one question about, we spoke a little bit about the high school level, but at the elementary level, for the parents who are paying attention and organizing their days, you kind of know that the B and C cohorts are a couple of days off, right? That what you're happening on the end of the week and what's happening in the beginning of the week. And so, I'm just wondering about that time, you know, what opportunities we have for educators to collaborate across the district to think about that time when everyone's together. And I appreciate the desire to focus on reading and writing is really fundamental at the elementary level. But how we're going to see that be integrated, right? And then, we're not, my kids have figured out pretty quickly, right? What happens on Monday is what happens on Thursday, the next, you know, they've learned that. And so, I'm just wondering what we're thinking, parents might see that leader looks a little different, or if they wouldn't have other writing time that's asynchronous those days?
So, that is the part of the plan that will look a little bit different for that reason exactly, because different teachers may focus on different whole-group components. And so, the plans will continue to be posted in CSO, because that's a place that we've, you know, taught everybody to look, and we don't want to give that up. But individual teachers will also kind of communicate the nuanced changes in their plans based on that ELA block. Because what your kids have come to expect in terms of the repeat instruction will not necessarily carry forward in this new plan. It's the simplest way I can explain it. But I know that at the elementary level, our instructional coaches have been meeting with teams and creating videos and training paraprofessionals, and our principals have been communicating more specifically what changes look like for parents. So, I think the best thing to do is to stay in touch with school-based communications, because they'll be the most specific to the level of the child's grade span.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the report, and I agree with Mr. Palance. I think, you know, the DESI mandate is like a lot of mandates. It can be frustrating for us. And this came on very quickly, and a lot of work had to be done very quickly and change quickly as well. But on the other side, the pool testing, I think, is exciting for us as we kind of, hopefully, are coming out of this with vaccine and moving forward, hoping to get back to more normalcy in the school district. So, good and bad in this discussion tonight. But thank you to everyone, and especially to Ms. Freeman and Mr. Collins kind of pushing forward. And I know you've put a lot of work into this pool testing, looking at it from financial as well as getting as many teachers and staff to be involved in this as we go forward this endeavor. So, thank you, and it's a great update, and I think it's a good way to start these meetings. And I know the community really likes this information and keeps everybody updated as we go through a very, very difficult year. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is, each year, the high school leadership team makes recommendations for adjustments to the course offerings at the high school. And tonight, Mr. Todd Vazillo, the high school principal, along with Mr. Ken Almeida, who is Director of Foreign Language at the high school, will provide the highlights for the proposed changes to the 2021-2022 school year. So, welcome.
Great. Thanks, Mrs. Fritz, and welcome to the, good to see all the school committee members here. I'm going to share my screen, and I certainly am excited that Mr. Almeida, who's our interim director of foreign languages with me tonight. He has been instrumental in helping craft the vision for the foreign language department. And I'm happy to be working with him tonight to share. So, this process starts in October, November, and we work through December and January to put everything together. And we typically meet with our high school directors to consider what changes need to be made relative to the high school program and studies. And we base it upon what student needs, interests are, and also looking, trying to project forward what we think would be courses that we have higher enrollment or demand, and also looking at the demand or needs of our community. So, I'll start here by sharing this course selection timeline with the community. And although we're in a situation where we're not in school full-time, if you look at this graph, it shows you kind of the timeline of what we have to do in order to build the master schedule, starting with school council presentations and teacher recommendations on February eighth. The community should know, if you're a junior in high school, rather a sophomore in high school or a junior, we'll have an AP Info Night via webinar on February ninth, led by Mrs. Monopoly, our Assistant Principal for Curriculum Instruction Assessment, and also Susie Ariel, who's our AP Coordinator for the high school. For our eighth-grade families who might be watching tonight, we'll have a webinar again on February twenty-third to talk about program of studies and course selection to help work through first-time families in terms of what that would look like and help their students select courses. And then, we'll have, for the weeks of March first through March fifteenth, we'll have individual counselor meetings, whether it's in-person when students are in school during a study or via Zoom, those will continue to happen. That might take a little longer than has in the past, but we did this last year as the shutdown happened midway through our course selection process last spring. The week of March twenty-second is a time that will take all the information of students The week of March 22nd is a time that will will take all the information of student requests and then start course tallies and. Or sit down with directors and start to allocate what teachers will teach, what sections and courses for the following school year. The 29th, we have actually what the assignments will be. And then we'll on the week of April 2nd. We have both course placement meetings with people who are families that might want to choose a different course that they weren't recommended for. The week of April 12th, we'll did entry. And then we start to build on. Right before April vacation or all through April vacation. So Mrs. Nevada and Mrs. Wen will work through April vacation and try and get everything together. And hopefully we get something that will come out in May, early May. And then we work with school counselors from July 1st to the end of the school year, or rather June 1st to the end of the school year to resolve conflicts for placement. So. That's generally what ends up happening. And if you recall this last. Year extremely difficult time where the master schedule was built on a really, really tight timeline or cohort D was built on a really, really tight timeline as well. So. The hope is to get this somewhat resolved prior to the close of school this year.
Mr. Bazilo, are you trying to share your screen? We're we're just, we're not actually seeing that right now.
Sorry about that. Thanks. Thanks for letting me know. All right. Is that better? I should have asked. It's always always a teachable moment. Sorry. So there there's a spine right there in terms of the dates. Can you see that now? Could you get a thumbs up? That'd be great. Thank you. So there's, as I talked about, there's a lot compressed into this kind of short time window. And again, we'll try and get this resolved by the close of school this year. Again, there'll be, we'll have to adjust as the situation around COVID and what next school year looks like. And hopefully we'll have a good spring here relative to vaccinations and. And some guidance on what school will look like next year. So we can get some sense of normalcy and and back in the rhythms and regular routine. So. In terms of proposed changes, not really many proposed changes, the most exciting changes in bullet three, but the first two bullets talk about. Courses that we are already offer and we all we offer an alternating year. So those are just to be noted that those will be resolved and offered in a course selection sheets. Additionally, the 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 third bullet talks about our foundations of cooking course, which is basically based upon. An inclusion model and our unified model here at the high school. Where students will be partnered with special significantly special education students. And we'll work in our foods courses. So it's pretty exciting for us to be able to offer that. Does these foundations of music and also foundations of art, two courses that we're running this year actually are. Two of our most popular electives at the high school. So I think what will end up happening is we'll. We'll have another. Popular elective here within family consumer science. I'll turn it over to Mr. Almeida now, who will work work through his recommendations and vision for the foreign language department. So Ken, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Bazilo. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Kind of as a synopsis of the the proposed changes that you see before you, I used. We used as the department guiding principles such as the district's strategic priorities. Initiatives such as our focus on equity and the 2020, 2021 goals as proposed by. The DSC World Language Leadership Network of which I am a member. The first change basically. That I propose is that we change the terminology of our department from foreign to world languages. As we know, we have. Families that speak second languages that it's part of the fabric of our society and there's nothing foreign about that anymore. So more inclusive. Recommendation would be the change of the terminology to world languages. To highlight some of the new offerings this for next year. We will be proud to offer foundations of linguistics course. Which is kind of the science behind language and will appeal to students who haven't gotten their feet wet yet with a particular language, but. Want to kind of explore the science of how languages acquired, the syntax. You name it. I think it's a good opportunity for those students who. Haven't really dedicated to a specific language yet and want to learn about language itself. Our heritage programs are part of DSC's world day leadership. World Language Leadership Networks. Strategic goals this year was just to offer. Opportunities for students who come from as homes where English is not the first language. And looking at the fabric of our of the Shrewsbury community, we have a high Hispanic population and a Brazilian population. And to quote. One of the readers of our equity program. Notion of care is the root of racial proficiency. You're not fully caring for kids if you don't know them. So offering a heritage language. Courses offer students the opportunity to explore their identity and language forms a huge part of identity. I also propose eliminating the Spanish to language and culture class. And the reason for it is that that's an intermediate class and. With the ACTL benchmarks for learning languages. The novice level is usually done over two years at the middle school level and currently at the high school. We only offer a one year novice program. So we needed to make sure our introductory courses were equitable in terms of. What we offer at the high school in our middle levels. Next slide, Mr. Bazilo. And as such. Looking at our current core structures, I propose that we change the introductory French. The French one course to introductory French one. And our accelerated French one class, which is a. The creation was to support students. With novice language concepts in an additional year. And when you think about what we offer at the middle level. Our middle level students have two years right now of exploring novice skills and acquiring those skills. So by offering the same in high school or maybe at the high school, we are. Having a smoother transition, we'll offer a smoother transition for our students to go from novice level language to more intermediate. Level language at a more equitable. Rate as our middle school students have with two years and the same would apply for our Spanish program as well. To have the novice language kind of mirror what offers, what our offers are at the middle school, having two. Years of exposure to novice level language learning. And then the transition to an intermediate course. Such as Spanish two right now would be, the students will be better prepared to. Explore intermediate language. With that, we also, I'd like to propose the, we modify our current terminology in our. Level two and above courses to reflect the ACTL proficiency benchmarks. Those are. The benchmarks that we assess our students in terms of their. Ability in the language. So a course, for instance, Spanish two will now be intermediate Spanish two and it kind of. Reflects our push as educators to. Bring our students along the path of proficiency and kind of boost them up that proficiency ladder.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Almeida.
Thank you.
In terms of other proposed changes, when we look at our instructional technology and media services department. I know that the committee, we've talked about this before about incorporating some financial literacy. In meeting with our director, we think there's an opportunity we can offer this course. For the coming year as an elective. We also look to adjust the TV production courses by adding film at the end. As you know, we have a new. Teacher within our TV studio and recommendations coming from both. Mrs. Herbert and Shawna Powers, the director, we'd like to incorporate that. The additional thing is we're trying to cycle more students into through the TV studios. So we're looking to split the full year TV two production course into two semester courses. To enable more students access to what is a state of the art. Studio, but also one of the most enriching activities that people who participate or students that participate in this program. Really can look back on and and say it's a great opportunity. So we want to try and expand opportunities there. As a result of some of these changes, we have to look for sectioning and in short of adding additional staffing, we were looking, projecting that we will not offer computer programming with Java. The multimedia applications and advanced multimedia and we're going to see where this shakes out over the course of the year. This next year, if the proposal moves forward. Science and engineering, as you remember, we had a grant from the 188 Foundation to start to implement Project Lead the Way Pathway. And the next course that we are will look to implement is human body systems. As a result of the pandemic, Mr. Riscosi has and and I have had conversations with the 188 Foundation and we've put that grant on hold. There's a little bit of money remaining in there. For this implementation, we need to see how. The situation we're currently in kind of shakes out. So we, they've agreed that we can put a one year pause on this addition. And still uncover the money for implementation the following school year. Social science had pretty significant changes in terms of curriculum frameworks that I know Mrs. Clutter can attest to this. We've had lots of conversations about what this would look like. But in terms of what our current program is offering, we'd eliminate exploring family history as it has historically low enrollment or requests. We're also shifting some of the prerequisites to provide more access to students in AP psychology, AP human geography, AP. US history, where you try to have more flexible admission requirements or recommendations for those courses and some hard fast deadline. More hard fast prerequisite. And additionally, we are changing the elective, want to change elective of law in order to law, which more accurately reflects. The content of the course of constitutional law, trial law, a number of other laws. So. In terms of social science too, what they've done with the curriculum frameworks, I know Mrs. Clutter has talked about this at previous meetings is that they've shifted some of the units of study relative to the US one, US two and world civilizations. Pushing Renaissance and Reformation and world civilizations to middle school level and starting. After that relative to and reclassifying some of the units of study. Starting with wealth, revolution, nationalism, industrialization and imperialism. So it's kind of categorized these in different. Areas. They've also made a shift around looking at constitutional law in US one. And also looking at the start of the American Revolution. Where United States history two will include the nineteen, start at the nineteen twenties and move through modern America. A really significant lift, in my opinion, relative to social studies or social science curriculum is incorporation of. Civics Action Project, which has been legislated under the frameworks. So we are working on implementing that at the high school. As you know, the legal woman voters typically comes to the high school and offers a voting drive. Senator Chandler at the State House has put this forward for Worcester Public Schools and we've been a little bit ahead of the curve with it, but now we'll have more students involved in our. Our voter drive, but also have other opportunities to engage in action civics projects here at the high school. We also have a couple of changes just within the visual arts program relative to dropping sculpture from ceramics two and ceramics three. And then we'd look to eliminate or drop the course of advanced digital art and design and add the new course of darkroom photography two. For those that have been in the high school, yes, we do have a darkroom. Yes, we do use it. It's a again, another really popular elective in terms of visual arts department that and ceramics are two of the most popular again electives. In our programming. So with the work of Mrs. LeBlanc, we've she determined that we have a need and a demand for that. So we'd like to move forward with it. And that's the proposed. Changes that we have and Sir Almeida and I will certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Nothing? And if you could, there we go.
Yep.
Lindsay, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, no, I did. And then I turned my video off instead of unmuting. I I wanted to just really certainly supportive of all the changes, but particularly call out two, two things that you mentioned, I think the inclusion of the heritage classes. And and also I missed the 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 name. Of the inclusion class in the in the food sciences area, but those really do demonstrate to me a real commitment on our part to thinking about equity and thinking about our kids in a more. Holistic way and making sure they all have feel welcome in our building. And so I'm I'm excited to see. Some of those changes is we think we we think about the structures, right? These are part of the structures. What courses do we teach and what do we offer? And so I'm excited about that. I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing anything? No. I was excited to see the piece about the civics. I mean, we've talked about that. And I know Hannah Kane, President Kane has mentioned that before, and I think for students, it's something to be engaged in. And I'm surprised Jason has not brought that up. He's smiling, I can see him. So thank you. I'm glad that's being incorporated as we move along, especially for students today. Anything from Dr. Sawyer?
I want to thank Mr. Bazilo and Mr. Almeida. I think that each year. The high school is very thoughtful about ways they can adjust the course catalog based on. You know, what courses are working well, how they can make things fit better in terms of student learning. And in terms of preparing them for life after Shrewsbury High School. And I think this year is another good example of that. Obviously, the reality that we face is that we're not going to be adding staff and and programming. That's due to the fiscal reality we face, as well as the fact that we are pretty much maxed out for space at the high school as well. But it would have been very easy, frankly, to just say, in this extraordinary year, we're just going to stand pat, no changes. And I think that it just goes to. Credit the high school leadership team that they are looking to continue to try to find ways to improve. In a small or even more. Important ways each year. And I want to particularly thank Mr. Almeida for his leadership this year as the interim director of foreign language department, soon to be world language department. And the thoughtful approach that he and his team are taking to some of these revisions as well. So the committee will get the full document of the program of studies in advance of your meeting next Wednesday. I will incorporate these changes and we'll ask you to vote to support it at that time. So again, thank you to. Mrs. Bazilo, Mr. Almeida and to the entire team at SHS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are moving on to our elementary redistricting project. At our meeting on January 6th, the school committee was presented with a summary of the redistricting options that the consulting team created based on the school committee's guiding principles. And feedback from our redistricting committee. We had a community forum on their redistricting and that was held on January 12. And the redistricting committee met again on January 14th to continue reviewing options. Members of the redistricting committee and our app geo consultants are going to present the two recommended options to us tonight. And there's going to be a third option that we focused on on socioeconomic parity. And we want that to be highlighted. This is not going to be recommended. By it was not recommended by a majority of the committee, but we want it to be highlighted so that the community. Understands that it was looked at as one of our options and we want everybody to know that was a consideration. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collins and he will go forward with the presentation.
Sure. I think we'll start with Dr. Sawyer, if that's okay.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Just to kick this off, I just want to again thank the members of the redistricting committee. I think they've done a horrendous job over the course of this project. That was interrupted by COVID, but really hasn't been been working very intensively. Over the past several months on this project, along with our excellent partners from AppGeo who are consultants to this project. I I think it's important to mention a few things to to frame the conversation before we turn it over to Mr. Collins. First off, I think it's important for the community to know, this was a very, very thorough process. I think you'll see the the two recommended. Pieces are actually, I think, options number eighteen and nineteen and those are. Based on a very thorough review and trying to find ways to come into. Alignment as much as possible with the guiding principles that the school committee charged the committee with. So it's been a very thorough process. I think that people will also see based on the two options that are being recommended. That the redistricting committee listened to the feedback that was received from community forums. And there are some proposed options that reflect. Some feedback that was provided by families based on the the initial options that were put forward. So I think the it's important to recognize that the committee listened and is proposing some adjustments potentially as a result. I mean, then finally, just the importance of sticking with the time. I mean, then finally, just the importance of sticking with the timeline that we laid out, the school committee laid out as well at the beginning of this project. Next week, a week from tonight, there will be a school committee meeting where there will be a public hearing for those who want to be heard by the school committee relative to their preference or any feedback that they have relative to the options that are being put forward tonight as recommendations in advance of the school committee vote, which is scheduled for February tenth. It's important to stick to this timeline in order to make sure that there's adequate time to communicate the changes to families. Make sure they can make informed decisions about their transportation for next year and so forth. But again, it's it's we're on target with that. And we will be sure to send out very specific information to district families. If they're interested in speaking at next week's public forum, which will be another Zoom meeting because we're told choose your media connection won't be available in person until February. And how we'll be able to connect them to make sure that they can participate. So with that, we were thorough, we listened and we were sticking and are able to be on our timeline as a result of the hard work of this committee. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins, who will introduce the presentation from our partners at AppGeo.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And before we do that, and I turn it over to both Kate Hickey and Priya Senkalia from AppGeo to run through this presentation. You'll see that this evening, as Dr. Sawyer referenced, Mrs. Friss referenced at the outset that there are as a result of all the redistricting committee work, that there are two scenarios that are recommended to you for your consideration. We know that you're not going to take a vote this evening, but really the the point of tonight is to bring those two recommendations, so called scenario eighteen and scenario nineteen, which are basically sequential iterations of the number of different scenarios that we've looked at. And some of them have been small changes, but you know, we're up to iteration eighteen and nineteen here as recommendations to you. And again, the great work of the redistricting committee who have had really a hundred percent attendance at all of our meetings and events. And so we want to bring these to the forefront to you and have a discussion and respond to any questions that you might have and interact with you this evening on this recommendation leading up to your upcoming vote. In terms of again, the folks that are on the call from the redistricting committee, in addition to the school committee members listed are Tarek Andy representing Beal School, Shannon Creedon representing Patton School, Christine Jazinski representing Coolidge, Rajesh Veligapudi representing Floral Street School and Sanam Zaire representing Spring Street School. In addition to Tiffany Ostrander, principal at Coolidge School, myself, Dr. Sawyer and Brian Maybe, principal at Spring Street School. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Kate and Priya to run through the entirety of this presentation and then be able to respond to questions or discussion at the end. Priya?
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, everybody. Just to move ahead, thank you for the introductions. We are going to, and this has been said at the outset, but just go over some of the current elementary zones and demographics with you and then present the two recommended scenarios, scenario eighteen and nineteen, and then the scenario with the socioeconomic parity. And then, of course, just go over the timeline and next steps and open it up for questions from you. So this slide, you know, you have seen now several presentations, but this is your, these are your current elementary zones and also the, you know, what your enrollment is currently and what the the demographics are. And this is the result of some of the work that we've done as far as demographics and projections. So it gives you numbers for what projected students look like to twenty thirty. And now I will jump right into the recommended scenarios. As far as scenario eighteen is concerned, just to give you a brief overview before I show you the scenario is that it is one of the five scenarios that we had presented to you earlier as, you know, those sort of the first presentation of scenarios. And this was one of the balanced options. We've given you three balanced options and this is one of them. And you know, the the focus again, you know, bringing back the point of that, how we were trying to pay attention to all the guiding principles and you and you know, we've said this many times, they worked against each other. So balancing them was the challenge. And but in this scenario, you know, you're trying to pay attention to target enrollment as well as all the other guiding principles. And so this again is a scenario. You will see that, you know, we were we were paying attention to the target enrollment, to socioeconomic parity, to, you know, the the demographics. And then, of course, to a lot of the neighborhoods and how much of the neighborhoods can be balanced, keeping in mind the, of course, the target enrollment and the target projected enrollment as well. So this is a scenario that's been, you know, shown to you. So I'll just quickly review it though. New Beal will be this large swath of components from Patton, Coolidge and Floral. And you know, that's, that's what's going to make the new Beal school. Coolidge will be losing a good portion of components, but it'll also be added by adding on with some of the floral components. And then the Floral Street School will have all of these floral components, including some pattern and spring components as well. As far as pros and cons, we've kind of listed them out using the using the guiding principles as 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 points. So minimizing change, we've we've done the calculation of how many students would be affected. And this scenario has one of the lesser counts of students displaced to about six hundred and sixty nine students considering all the scenarios. The enrollment stays within that plus or minus ten percent target enrollment that we've discussed before. And of course, keeping in mind the future development was very important. And so we've, you know, made sure that wherever there's expected development, we target, we focus that towards a new Beal. In in fact, adding on an additional component, even though there are no students here, but there's expected development. So we created that and made sure that that was planned to go towards New Beal. Trying to consider the neighborhoods as well, keeping components that we knew were walkers in the in the school. Of course, that, you know, was an issue and we've addressed it, but this is what our first proposal to you is. The the cons of the scenario, of course, is just that, that there are some components that, you know, are walkers would not be go, you know, not be the to go into their closest school. And then, of course, there would be some of the Northwest Patton students on a longer commute. So those are the pros and cons of scenario eighteen. And to jump ahead to a scenario nineteen. So scenario nineteen is an iteration of eighteen. And what's really important is that, of course, we took in mind all the comments that we got from parents. And we tried to adjust eighteen to incorporate those comments. And of course, the focus was neighborhoods and how do we keep students whose neighborhoods were close to their schools in the same school and others are minimizing the change. We did, as a result of this, of course, Patton and spring enrollment would go up a little bit, but it was deemed okay compared to increasing enrollment in Floral, which has a tendency to have a higher enrollment. So this is what the scenario looks like. So Patton three and four would now remain in Patton, spring three and two would also remain in spring. So those are the the big changes that we made. And as a result of this, as you can see, the projected enrollment of Patton and spring, even with the while at the current enrollment would just would be comfortably within the plus or minus ten, but the projected enrollment would be a little higher. But I think the 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 committee felt that that was fine to do that, but made sure that Floral was was well under and also New Beal as well under keeping in mind that there would be new developments coming in. So I just want to highlight the differences and also the pros and cons, of course. This scenario would have the least students displaced at six twenty seven. And then, of course, the neighborhoods would would stay intact. So Patton three and four and spring two, spring three, which was in the previous scenario, moving with staying, but spring two was going into Floral, would now both of them would stay in spring. And Patton two more was more logical to send it to Floral than to New Beal. And so that's another change that we we made to eighteen. And as we, as I said, with enrollment, it's allowing for growth in Beal and Floral and also keeping in mind the future developments, just like like in eighteen and the demographics are more balanced. The cons, as I just mentioned, was the Patton and spring enrollment was a little high and then the Northwest Patton students commute. So this is what we see as the pros and cons in nineteen. And then this slide shows you highlights the differences. Patton three and four and spring two and Patton two. The other little change that we also made, which was feedback from a a family that said that it made more sense to move the neighborhood here off, was it Patrick, was it Claw Street?
Yeah, so it's it's Clue Street. It's kind of traverses Route one forty on both the east and west side. The east side of Clue Street is kind of unto itself, only a few homes and then connected to Holt Street, which is a cul-de-sac. And it's really not connected to the Hills Farms neighborhood or the Floral Four neighborhood. So we, under both scenarios, eighteen, nineteen, we just extended the so-called floral component eleven to include that. And in both scenarios, they'd be assigned to the New Beal School.
Right, so there's a little adjustment and that didn't really change the numbers very much. So that was fine to make that adjustment. So as you can see, the differences between eighteen and nineteen to repeated Patton three and four would stay in Patton, spring three and two would stay in spring and Patton two would now go to Floral, whereas in eighteen it was going to New Beal. And then we have a little, you know, showing you the differences in the projected enrollment. As mentioned, Patton and spring would be a little on the higher side, but Floral and New Beal would have the room for growth. So the those were the, those are the two scenarios that we want the committee to consider and and vote on. But we did want to present the scenario with the focus on socioeconomic parity, because this was a really important point which we deliberated on extensively. And while there was, while the redistricting committee, there were several people who didn't support it. We still wanted to present it to the community and to the school committee. So this is what the scenario looks like. And we were able to, and just want to highlight what the reduced lunch population would become given the scenario. And you know, it's it's sort of balances a little bit better than it was in any of the other scenarios. But you know, Coolidge is twenty four percent since this is the metric by which we can measure this socioeconomic parity. This is what, you know, helps us. So as you can see, in the scenario, there is a lot of movement of students and that's the only way we could actually get the socioeconomic parity. So there are components from Coolidge going to Patton and to spring. There's a whole host of Patton components being moved to Coolidge. And then a lot of spring components are moving out to Floral and then also to Patton. So this is, this is how you can achieve the the balance in the reduced lunch is by moving students, you know, to schools that are quite a bit further from where they live. So just give you a minute to take all of that in.
Well, folks are looking at that. I might just add a couple of points. Question that came up last time from Mrs. Hefron, what is the, you know, the census around students eligible for free reduced lunch at the elementary level? And it's twenty percent. So just as a point of reference in that in trying to, you know, put this together in a in a constructive way to bring about a greater amount of parity in that statistic, the the difficulty, the challenge is, is that the concentration, if you will, a higher concentration of those students are near proximal to Coolidge School. And conversely, there's very few that are proximal to Spring Street School. And so you've got these concentrations or lack thereof in in order to try to bring greater parity, you need to be basically shifting students from out of Coolidge School that are proximal and would consider it a neighborhood school like Shrewsbury Green there is transported under this model. I believe that's to Spring Street School.
Yes.
Yes. And also Avalon to south of Route twenty being transported to the New Beal School. So that's what makes it difficult is that the, you know, students who are eligible for free reduced lunch are not, you know, evenly distributed through our community. It's it's really, there's concentrations or lack thereof. And that that's what makes for the the challenge in trying to do this and in working through it, but also trying to maintain some semblance of a neighborhood school.
And as far as target enrollment with the scenario, you know, we have good target enrollments. The numbers are comfortable and same with the reduced lunch percentages. The 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 key thing, of course, is that, and I just jump ahead to the pros and cons, while it is providing that that parity and, you know, distributing the students all over town, it is going to create the largest number of students having to change schools. And of course, it's causing, will also cause significantly more bus rides and more complicated transportation. There might be, you know, requirement for additional buses, which, you know, are not planned for. And it's, it is the least best fit for neighborhood considerations, because a lot of the the feedback that we've got from parents, even with the scenarios that we're presenting were that, you know, we're going, we're moving to a school that's further away and we have two schools that are closer to us than the one that we've been assigned to. So that is a key consideration and that this scenario does not fit that. And it did not have a majority support of the redistricting committee. So this is the socioeconomic parity scenario. And just to show you the numbers with sixteen, which is the socioeconomic parity is nine sixty five students would be displaced and eighteen and nineteen would be six sixty nine and six twenty seven respectively. And these numbers, of course, does not do not include the three hundred and twelve Beal students that have would be moving schools regardless. So just in in closing, the these will be the two scenarios to be considered are eighteen and nineteen. And that is what you will be looking at for for your consideration. Anything else, Patrick, or should I?
The last slide with the calendar.
Yep.
And as we have that there, I guess I did want to just close this by, you know, I guess reiterating what we've talked about before, but might not be obvious to everybody in terms of community members about what is really at play here. And I would, you know, characterize this as an inflection point for Shrewsbury Public Schools Elementary Education. In that it's it's not that we're just replacing an old school with a new school, but rather we're doing a number of different things here all at the same time. First and foremost is a grade reconfiguration. And that is something that you voted on a couple of years ago to have one fewer transitions for our students and their elementary education. So that after this change, students would be assigned to a school for their entire kindergarten through grade four education. Secondly, we're we're, you know, with the new project, the additional space, we're allowing for future growth of the community. Enrollment growth, student enrollment growth. Enrollment growth, student enrollment growth. We're also making space for the offering for the first time. Of full day kindergarten for all of our students, something that ninety-five percent of other Massachusetts school districts already get. And also, the final piece would be to that we're intentionally drawing down the enrollment. At the existing elementary schools, Patton and Floral and Spring and Coolidge. Purposely shifting students away, because they have been stressed for space. And we're repurposing those classrooms, not only for full day kindergarten, but also for. Dedicated spaces for music, art, special education, English language learner services, so that there is a parity of space. Between the new school and all of our elementary schools. So that we, in fact, can provide equitable education at the elementary level to all of our students. Regardless of the school that they're at. So with that, this again is the kind of summary timeline and happy to turn it over back to Mrs. Fritz.
Thank you for the presentation. And before we go to questions and comments, I would like to see if any of the redistricting committee members. Have any comments to make to the committee, because I know we had a lot of discussion. At our last meeting and a lot of comments. So I'd like to turn it over to the committee for any comments they would like to address to the school committee. And if we could stop sharing the presented presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really appreciated, you know, the feedback we got from the community. And I think. Meeting that we had as a committee after that community forum was really. Was really, was really productive meeting because we were able to take a lot of that feedback and I think make. Improvements through the second option that you saw. So I was really pleased to see that we were able to reduce the amount of change in that option, amount of change that would be on various families. While also being able to reduce some of the pressure on schools like Floral that in the past have been over capacity. So I think there are very positive changes and it was a very good discussion and yeah, so I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for for giving us the opportunity to present the recommendations to you. So as Shannon mentioned, we did, we we looked into several options. And then we boiled it down to two best scenarios that we can bring forward to the school committee. By considering all the guiding principles that were defined by the school committee we had of this process. So as scenario nineteen, as it says, they had, based on previous. Public hearing of parents' feedback. We are very comfortable that scenario nineteen justifies all the school, all the school committee. Guiding principles and also the the disturbance or the redistribution of students to the the minimum. I want, what also I would like to add as as we, as Peter put forward earlier and already. Is that we did, we did look into the the. The socioeconomic parity. And then wanted like, and then had an extensive, intense conversations, debates and discussions within the, within the team. But we we were, we were happy that we looked into it. We we saw that we got an opportunity to see how that looks like. And then, so then then we we strongly felt that it's only. Supporting one of the guiding principles, which was by by going with the socioeconomic parity. Rather than maximizing the other principle or sacrificing other principles. So we strongly felt that eighteen and nineteen are the two good scenarios to put forward before the. Committee and we look forward to your feedback on this. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, um, thank you, thank you. I I really want to say thank you to everyone of, you know, those. Redistricting committee members for all the work we put into it. Personally, I was challenged and I was informed by the contribution of everyone and I, you know. I acquired a newfound, you know, respect for, you know, everyone's work in here, especially. Dr. Sawyer and Pat. I'll tell you, I'm new to Shrewsbury and I'd had the opportunity to, you know, hear Dr. Collins. And I always kind of, you know, respected his leadership and I saw that play out during our meetings. But also, Mr. Collins is, I'll tell you what. I I wondered, I, there was kind of this discipline to the way he carries out his duties. And I I was like, this guy must be, you know, a veteran. And then the next meeting, I was, you know, told that, oh, the guy was actually, you know, a veteran. I wasn't surprised and it was so evident and and I felt really, really, you know, impacted by everyone's work. Now, you know, substantively to the work of the subcommittee, I'll tell you that, you know, all of us put our hearts into it. We went in the, I represented the Beale, you know, school. Currently have two of my older kids in Floral and I have one in, you know, Parker Road. And any of the scenarios that we came up with would impact me. We just recently moved a year ago. To a new home and I intention, my intention was to remain within the floral school zone. Because my kids loved it so much, I didn't want to go anywhere else. And I'm going to end up, you know, I'm talking about me, not my kids. I'm going to end up in the New Beale School. But I'll tell you this one thing. One of my, you know, enduring recollections and memories about the experiences that my kids had was at Beale. My older kid, I think, did two years over there and then moved to Floral and the second one did one year. And and they talked about the relationships with their teachers. And and for me, that was what stood out. And I had the opportunity to meet the teachers and and we kind of forged this relationship. And when my, the second child went to Beale, we were praying that she would end up in the same class my older one, you know. And 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 that's exactly what happened. And the point that I want to make is this. There's something very obvious about the experiences that our kids have and the experiences that. Wherever they are, whatever class they were in, they've had the best teachers. And 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 I think that speaks a lot about this Shrewsbury School, you know, public school system generally. So I wanted to say thank you for giving our kids those opportunities to grow and to learn. And finally, I want to speak, speak to the, you know, socioeconomic parity issue that that was addressed in one of the. Maps. We we again went, you know, back and forth, trying to look at this very important, you know, factor. Which is one of so many factors that impacts, you know, children's development. And what we realized was that some parameters cannot be changed necessarily. By redistricting, for instance, because a student, a child's, you know, development. Could be affected, you know, influenced by, let's say, you know, the parent's educational status, you know. Whether they get help at home for school, homework and all that stuff. But we also wanted to find out whether, you know, just blowing up the school zone and, you know, model. All right, would in any way change the fate of our kids. And and obviously, that map didn't, you know, pan out and we understand. But what I want to present to the school committee is this. As an assignment, if we can take that map, that model. And then factor in the cost benefits, right, of logistics, basing. If we're supposed to be doing those, you know, cross-town basing, all the logistics that would go into it and the costs, right? And if we can then look at, let's say, you know, some of our school zones that have, you know, low socioeconomic, you know. Equity issues there and the amount of resources that have to go into it. You know, which one would outweigh the other? And I'm 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 like, I'm I'm bound to think that it's the other one, you know. Really enhancing the opportunities for the students wherever they are, not necessarily having to move them around. So to this end, I just want to say that, you know, let's look out for our students who are struggling and I know we are already doing that. And then look for the opportunities, the resources, the personnel, you know. To bring to them so that those kids can also, you know, move along in in the educational continuum. So. That's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can go next. So I I just want to say that while I, while I do support the the two options that we've recommended. I do also think it's a missed opportunity for us by not including the socioeconomic option and putting that on the table. While there are certainly complications to doing that. The district has spent a lot of time talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, and this was in an excellent opportunity to. To put that forth to the community and actually have that discussion. One point I will make is that I I don't believe that map is a perfect map. Most notably, spring one, which if you go back to the map and look at it, spring one is just a very large chunk and in a. Truly equitable socioeconomic situation, I think spring one would need to be broken up into multiple parts. I understand why we did not move it forth and I do support the other two, but. Especially at this time in our society, I thought that this was a great opportunity to. To sort of balance that, because there are documented disparities between the schools. And I know the district leaders make a lot of efforts to. To relieve that, but there are also documents, there is also documentation that shows that socioeconomic equity. Helps all students do better. That's, that's really all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Christine?
I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my committee here that. It was a very thorough process. I think I appreciate the work that we've all put in. But also just wanted to add that we really appreciate the feedback we received from the community because it was taken to heart. And we've all worked very diligently to see how we could really balance those competing factors and needs for the community. But most especially want to echo what Tarek indicated about our different schools and how they do. Find ways to meet the needs of all of our, all of our students in the best ways possible. And the transparency and discussion that we've had around of that has been really enriching. But would just want to thank the community and thank for this committee here for all of the efforts that we've put forth. And I think we've put forth good plans for the overall school committee's consideration.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all of the committee members who stepped up and volunteered to do this. And I know when. We were starting to think about the redistricting committee and we said to ourselves, oh, this is going to be a really big project. It's going to be something. You know, when we did it with Floral, it was really, you know, something that's hard for the community, thinking about moving our children. And we never thought that we would be redistricting in the middle of a world pandemic, you know. We thought redistricting would be the hardest thing. We never knew there would be a pandemic on top of it. So I just want to thank you all for the time and effort. I think this one is one of the most thoughtful, hardworking committees that I've ever been involved with. I really am so deeply grateful for the time and effort that you've all put in to Ms. Ostrand or into Mr. Maybe, the amount of. Wisdom that you brought to this was just immense. And the community that gave us information that asked us difficult questions. It was really taken to heart in into consideration. And we looked at everything and I know some people. Said, well, why didn't you look at other options? And I think a lot of the work was behind the scenes and we did look at a lot of other options. And what you're seeing today is the culmination of a lot of those options. And I know it's maybe not easy for some families to see what these final two options are. But it is our best effort. We're trying to be balanced and some of the. Options had unintended consequences and even looking at the socioeconomic piece had unintended consequences. When we looked at that as a committee and decided not to bring it forward for some of the reasons that it came out to be. So we feel that these are two of the best options to bring forward to the school committee. We have a lot of work before us. We do have this public hearing on the twenty-seventh. We still want to hear more from the community for our final vote on the tenth. So I'm going to turn it over to the school committee members and to Mr. Wensky if he has any comments before we move forward. So any comments or questions? This is our time to ask before we move forward.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo your sentiments. I think this committee did an exceptional job, very engaged with all the scenarios that were presented to them. Also like to thank Mr. Collins and Abgeo for all the work and assistance you helped guide through a very complex process. We said it about, you know, the scheduling for hybrid earlier and, you know, change is is difficult. I definitely read all of the emails and appreciate all the feedback from the community. It's very challenging process, but one thing I am very confident in is that. The education and the quality of the programs won't change, right? If anything, it's it's, this is a benefit for all schools, not just the New Beale School. It opens up more space across the elementary grade level. And yeah, just really appreciate all the work that's gone into it, very challenging process. So thank you.
Committee members, any questions or comments? Mr. Valich.
Just to, thank you, Mrs. Fritz, just two comments. First of all, to again thank the redistricting committee and our staff and our consultants for all of their work. This task is the classic example of something that needs to be addressed in a public policy setting to which there is no perfect solution. And in fact, to which whatever option is chosen, there are going to be people who are dissatisfied. And that can create for an extraordinarily difficult task. So I do appreciate everyone's work. On a related note, the second comment that I want to make is that I appreciate the third option. With the socioeconomic focus being brought to the school committee and being included in our meeting materials and being part of the discussion tonight. Even though it does not bear the stamp of the formal or official recommendation, I do appreciate that being part of the conversation. As I alluded to a minute ago, I'm kind of starting here from the premise that there is not a solution that will. Meet the threshold of perfect. And so I think it is helpful for us to see what goes into achieving. A particular goal, even if it might not be something that is is free of challenge. I think that that personally for me is ultimately going to be helpful to me in in making my decision. So I want to thank the committee overall for their work. And I do want to again express my thanks for the the breadth of the options that were brought before us tonight.
Anyone else? Lindsay?
Yeah, of course, want to also thank everybody for for their work, but in particular, thank all of the parents for what you have put forward. I think you bring in a really important perspective. And as I think you've gotten to witness firsthand. The sausage making of public policy is not very pretty and 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 as was alluded to. Perfect is, perfect is a, is an abstract concept we try to get closer towards. Well, I'm really glad we set the principles. In some ways, I wish we had been clear with the community that we weren't going to be able to meet them all. And that and that that is not a reasonable expectation. They were, they were guideposts for us in order to make complicated trade-offs. I think the thing that heartens me most is that every email that we have received. Went went a little against what I kind of thought would happen. I thought lots of families would want to go to the new building. The new building was shiny and pretty and it's got fancy new furniture and it's got all the great little trappings of of wonderfulness. And in fact, I think to OT, every parent who reached out to us that they wanted to stay where they were. And what that tells us, what that tells me is that our schools, our administrators and our teachers are really good at creating community. And and I applaud them for that and I'm proud of that and I expect nothing less to continue. Next, next year when we go through this process. And so. I I hope more parents continue to reach out to us. I look forward to the public hearing. I hope parents feel that they are being heard. And that they're, what they say matters, even though we can't achieve perfect for all of them, but that we're making accommodations. So I want to thank all of you. These are not easy decisions for us to make at the end of the day. But the the process that we've gone through has been incredibly valuable to to all of us on the committee as we make this really difficult decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions? Yeah, I'm mute.
I would just reiterate the comments of what an excellent committee this was to work with. I appreciate their dedication and their thoughtfulness and wisdom that have got it to this point. Again, the opportunity for people to be heard by either emailing the school committee. Between now and their vote on February tenth. Or making public comment at the public hearing a week from tonight. And again, we'll send out detailed information about. How to give feedback in an email that will come out once we have the materials posted to the website for people to review further. And when it comes to February tenth, I'm certainly interested in hearing the feedback as well. And ultimately, just as with any vote the school committee takes, my responsibility is to make my own recommendation as superintendent. So I will, I will be providing that to the school committee with the meeting materials for February tenth and at that meeting. So. So uh again, thank you to everyone. Uh thank you to our partner with AppGEO who did tremendous work to help us through this. Uh and uh in particular, I also want to thank uh Mr. Collins for uh leading this initiative uh so skillfully and uh uh it made, it makes a huge difference for a project that this, that is this complex uh to be able to be uh shepherded in such a strong way. Uh so thank you. And we look forward to uh the public comment uh next week.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, we are moving on to the next item on our agenda. It's under policy. And tonight we have a first reading of a draft of an updated policy on Title IX requirements that updates and consolidates elements of existing school committee policy three sixteen harassment and policy six forty-five sexual harassment into a single policy. The school committee has a policy draft and an explanatory memo from Ms. Malone. Uh Mr. Palich and myself are the members of the policy subcommittee and we met along with Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Malone to discuss this. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Malone to provide an explanation.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Um so um as I think we've, we've discussed, the federal guidance changed under Title IX specifically, which is the sexual harassment uh policy. Um and in two thousand and eighteen, we had convened a subcommittee to look at our overall anti-harassment policy and had um worked up some language that I think we were very pleased with that reflected on our culture and our approach. Um but given that the guidance changed at the federal level, we um needed to combine both the new Title IX information and our previous anti-harassment information into a single policy. We also had had one policy for staff and one policy for students. So that was a third element that we were um combining. Um it is entirely possible that guidance at the federal level will change again across the next year or two. Um but at this time, this is what we need, what we have to work with. And so um I think you've, as the committee has had a chance to review the information in the draft, they'll see a combination of familiar language from our previous policy along with um some more legal sounding um documentation that captures the final rule um that was issued in late September at the federal level for the Title IX portion of it. Um I also wanted to mention that the, these policies are different than the uh anti-bullying policy, but they can run in parallel. So it's entirely possible to have an investigation of violation of our anti-bullying policy, while at the same time we would, might be looking at our anti-harassment policy or the Title IX portion of the anti-harassment policy. So I think um, you know, that's the general overview. I'm certainly open to any questions and any comments either from uh you, Ms. Fritz, or from Mr. Palich.
Any questions, comments? I know this is dense. Dr. McGee? You're on mute. Dale?
There. Sound okay now? All right, good. So I've several uh observations here and I just want to run through them with you. Um I had a bit of a rant with Dr. Sawyer earlier today just because this is written in such legalese that some of these sentences are unintelligible and I, I, you know, I, I just will register my complaint with that and, and let it go. But um the consent, the, the definition of consent doesn't specify the age of the person consenting. And I think that's a deficiency since I do not believe that minors are in a position to give consent. And so um that uh comes into my concern. Another issue has to do with how long you're keeping the records. Uh it's seven years. The statute of limitations in Massachusetts, I believe, is around uh for three or four years. But for uh sexual assault uh and abuse, it is thirty-five years. And uh it's conceivable that someone may, at some future date, uh reflect that the district did not do enough to address their complaints. So I, I again draw your attention to a concern. Um the uh other concern has to do with the fact that when we're dealing with sexual harassment and particularly uh in the context of minors, it uh is not just something within the school system that we're talking about, but it could uh be a crime. Uh and I see no uh language in here that reflects the commitment on the part of the district to report illegal activities to the appropriate authorities. So uh those are my big observations and I just thought I'd put them on the table for you.
I appreciate that, Dr. McGee. Um uh certainly I agree with you on the consent issue. And I think it's wise for us to take these portions that you have concerns about for a second look by our legal counsel. While it was already reviewed once, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to go back now and say, can you look at these through these eyes? Because these are important issues we would want to resolve. Uh and making sure that we were approaching it in the right way before we had um a final vote. Um so I, it with the, you know, Jason and, and um Sandy's agreement, I, I would be happy to do that and then, and bring it back for further review.
Mr. Palich?
Uh thank you, Ms. Malone. I, I would certainly appreciate you doing that and I appreciate Dr. McGee's insight and questions. And then candidly, as we discussed in our policy subcommittee meeting, um this is largely a compliance move to meet the standards of regulations that were changed frankly in a way that I personally don't agree with. And I think that my, my colleague had, had a similar um sense as well, that this is actually in many places a relaxation of requirements um that was designed to protect the accused, which, you know, as editorializing as an aside personally here, I'm not particularly thrilled with, but I know that compliance is a big part of this. To, to one specific question, you're, you raised, uh Dr. McGee, and I would turn it back to Ms. Malone or to Dr. Sawyer. Um I believe our obligation to report a crime of which we become aware is, is well ensconced in law regardless of what this policy may or may not say. I don't know if Dr. Sawyer or Ms. Malone can comment on that, but, but if, if a staff member becomes aware of a crime, I believe there are other existing, uh in particular state laws that would require us to report that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I'm, I'm sure that's true and it just seems to me that you, you close the loop. If you include some verbiage in this, uh, you know, because you, you're going to expect a fair number of these cases to drift into a reportable category.
Personally, I'd have no objection to ensconcing that on the policy as well. If we could review that with counsel.
Yeah, I, I agree with Dale and Jason. I think I would rather have Sarah take a second look at this just to make sure it's all buttoned up like you said.
Yeah, I appreciate the um, the comments, Dr. McGee.
Lindsay?
I certainly appreciate our need to stay in, in compliance. I just wonder a little bit about the timing here uh being today being a change in uh federal. Everybody at the federal got federal level and that this was, there were controversial changes at the time that they were made. Um uh that we are maybe engaging our, our lawyer and paying fees to our lawyer to look at something that might be changed and then we'll be looking at it again. Uh so if now is the moment that we must do this and there's another reason out there that we must get this done, uh you know, I'm certainly oh not foreclosing that uh at all, but just wondering a little bit about the need to, to move this one right, right now.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very reasonable question. And I did ask that of our attorney and her response was that she did not believe we would see changes at the federal level um for perhaps as long as a year. And so in the meanwhile, we would be out of compliance for that entire um time period. The final rules came out, it, rule came out at the end of September. Um with some of the other things we had on our, our plate, it was something that I set to the side. The timing does seem odd now. Um at the same time, we are, we would be out of compliance and we need to move to next steps such as training all potential investigators, posting our training materials on the website and updating handbooks and other documents. Um so once we get to a point where the school committee is in agreement, we need to do that work. Um we'll want to do that as expeditiously as possible, understanding that we may do, be doing it all over again uh within a year or so.
Right.
But I don't think it's changing tomorrow or in the next three months or possibly not even the next six. Um if that does happen, then we certainly will address it in a more timely manner.
Yeah, I think we should proceed with have Sarah take a, take a second look at it and move forward, knowing that it may change again. So everybody comfortable with that? Having Sarah take a second look and then we can come back for a final read?
Yeah, I truly appreciate all the feedback. I think all the points are very well taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have our minutes from our meeting held on January sixth of two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any changes or corrections? I'm not seeing any. Okay, those can be marked as accepted as distributed. Okay, we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F G for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair. So declares purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, where the deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body in return to open session only for the purpose of adjourned for the evening, may have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Call vote is required. Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Mr. Fennan?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Myself, I. Thank you and good night.